The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Osteen.
Here.
Alderman Rose. Alderman Collins.
Here.
Alderman Rucker.
Here.
Alderman Barrella.
Here.
Yay, nice to see you.
I'm glad to be back.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Mayor Harmanson.
Here. All right, we do have a quorum tonight, and first thing on the agenda is the citizens' communication. This is a time set aside on the agenda for citizens and visitors to address the mayor and the board on any topic that is not a public hearing. For those here in person, speakers will be restricted to three minutes unless otherwise permitted. Minutes may not be donated or transferred from one speaker to another. Any questions or comments for the mayor and the board may also be sent to the city clerk at T B E R R E T H at OsageBeach.org, no later than 10:00 a.m. on the board meeting day, the first and third Thursday of each month. Submitted questions and comments may be read during the citizen communication section of the agenda. The Board of Aldermen will not take any action on any item not listed on the agenda, nor will respond to questions, although staff may be directed to respond at a later time. The mayor and the board welcome and value input from the feedback from the public. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board tonight? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the approval of the consent agenda. As the board had the opportunity to read over the minutes from the Alder meeting, May 1st, 2025, and the bills list from May 15th, 2025, and if there are not any comments or questions or corrections, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion Alderman Rucker, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alderman Osteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda has been approved. Financial update, we're going to go to the city administrator, Devon Lake, please. No?
Nope, I got it. Just gonna pull it up real quick. Good evening, mayor and members of the board. Sales tax information through, this would be through March collection, we are at two point, little over 2.1 million. We are under 3.3 percent where we were at this time last year, but we are 0.7 percent above budget, so everything's looking okay right now. Any questions?
Any questions for Devon? All right, thank you very much. All right, we do have two proclamations this evening. The first one is fitting, as it said, National Public Works Week, May 18th through the 25th, 2025. Whereas, public works services provided in the community are an integral part of the citizens' everyday lives. The support of the understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works, systems, and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. The health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. The quality and effectiveness of the facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the effort and skills of public works officials. The efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Michael Harmanson, the mayor of Osage Beach, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th as National Public Works Week. In the city of Osage Beach, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions with public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. In witness thereof, I hereby hereunto set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Osage Beach to be affixed this 15th day of May, 2025. And a personal thank you to our public works. I've had the opportunity in the last couple of weeks to review out there and tour out there, and they do a wonderful job here in Osage Beach, so thank you very much. The second proclamation is the National Emergency Medical Services Week, also May 18th, 2024, 2025. Whereas, emergency medical services are a vital public service, and the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. The emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. The members of emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. It is appropriate to recognize the value of the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Michael Harmanson, mayor, in recognition of this day, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme EMS Strong called to care, I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. In witness thereof, I hereby hereunto set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Osage Beach to be affixed this 15th day of May, 2025. All right. We're going to move on to unfinished business, looks like we only have four items on the agenda tonight. First, we have second reading, this is Bill 25-42, An Ordnance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, adopting an amendment to the zoning map of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, by rezoning a parcel of land as described, rezoning case number 426. City planner, Carrie Patterson, please.
I have nothing further, mayor, unless you guys have questions.
Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve, second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Rucker, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Alderman Collins.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Barrella.
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Rose.
All right, second reading, Bill 25-42 passes. Need to move on to something exciting, everybody stand up and rub each other's shoulders or something? Bill 25-43, An Ordnance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to approve a contract with HydroClean LLC for Rockaway Lift Station Reliant Project for an amount not to exceed $112,680. This is the second reading, city engineer Drew Bowman, please.
I have nothing to add at this point, I do recommend approval, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anything from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve, second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Osteen, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Collins, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Barrella.
Yes.
Alderman Rose. Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Alderman Ruck, Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Collins.
Yes.
All right, second reading, Bill 25-43 also passes. Last item of old business, we have Bill 25-45, An Ordnance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to approve a contract with McKim and Creed for the East System Leak Survey Project for an amount not to exceed $20,000. Again, city engineer Drew Bowman.
Again, nothing to add at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Osteen.
I do have a few questions for Drew. Is this a company we've done business with in the past?
It is not, neither myself nor Caleb had any experience with this company in the past, so I did call their, references, thank you. Had a blank there for a second, and the people that they've worked with and listed on the references didn't have any concerns.
The only other comment, it's not a question, more or less, I think it would be helpful for the board on items such as this, if we had more information as far as how many bids were submitted.
There were two.
Okay. That's all.
Was the? Okay.
The bid tab's in there, did you not see it?
Pardon me?
The bid tab is in there.
I didn't see it.
Keep going all the way to the back.
Hang on.
There it is.
There, okay, sorry, my bad.
If you flip it over. There you go.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve, second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Barrella.
Yes.
Alderman Rose. Alderman Collins.
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
All right, Bill 25-45 also is approved, second reading. Moving on to new business. First item is, we have Resolutions 2025-15, a resolution of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity, necessity to amend the budget for fiscal year 2025, removing and adding jobs titles to the public works department. You going to take this, Devon?
I am. So this is the resolution, and the next item is the ordinance in regards to the discussion that we had at the last board meeting in making the foreman to supervisors and adding the level of crew leader to be more of a, in the field leadership. There is no monetary budget amendment, this is just a title change or title adjustments. The new pay scale plan and the new organization chart is also in the packet. There was discussion last time about how many positions we're adding, it's one, it's one position, which was eventually planned at the beginning from Zach's plan, it's just we're moving it up to be this year instead of next fiscal year. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Rucker.
I have a procedural question, since this is something that we've just started doing the last number of months, I have some questions about what we're doing, okay? Do we hold those questions till the next agenda item? Because, just because we pass this resolution doesn't mean that we're going to pass the ordinance.
Right.
So why would we, I mean, I guess I'm confused on what we discussed under this section of this, of this agenda item, I mean, I have some questions, but I'm, I mean, this is kind of just pretty straightforward, are we just saying, yeah, we want to go ahead and hear more? I mean, why would we vote it down?
Yeah.
I guess that's why I'm just confused on this procedural side.
It doesn't matter, to be really honest, I mean, it's no different than if, you know, when like, for instance, when we're passing a TIF, when there's, you know, four ordinances that all go together, whether the discussion happens on the first one or the fourth one, the discussion's the discussion. So if you wanted to raise them now, you can, or if you want to wait till the ordinance, you can. If there's changes or something, then obviously it'd be better to raise that on the item you want to change, but.
So there's really nothing to change on this portion of the agenda item, it's like, do you want to talk about it or don't you?
Yeah.
I mean, okay, I just, just I have questions, I don't know where to ask it, so I'll get it on the next item, thank you.
Very good. Alderman Osteen.
I'm going to piggyback on what Alderman Rucker stated, and I made some, raised some questions regarding the process at our last board meeting, I get confused on how this plays out for specific items here versus other items, as far as there's this specific bill followed by this discussion followed by, I'm just a little confused on the processes sometimes, because they don't seem to match up with a lot of the things we're doing.
So the resolution is just a stating of an opinion, it's not binding to anything, so.
So why do we, why do we have the resolution first? I think that's what everybody's confused about, if we're going to vote on the ordinance immediately following, why have, why do we need to have the resolution?
So the resolution is to state the reasons why, the ordinance is to actually approve the budget amendment.
Think of it as making findings of fact before taking action based on those findings of fact, like saying, here's what we've decided that these conditions have changed, period, we approve the resolution, and then the amendment is because of those reasons that we've found, we're making, you know, this budget amendment is justified. Does that make sense?
It was recommended by the.
Yeah, honestly, Joe Lauer says we have to do it, and if Joe says we have to do it, he's right, so that's my opinion.
Can someone clarify what's the difference between a resolution and a bill? Because this is on the agenda item as a bill, not a resolution.
Resolution doesn't, it doesn't change anything, it's just a fact finding thing. It's not, it doesn't bind you to anything, resolution is not, it's not a law or a rule, a bill, a bill turns into the ordinance, which is the law. So resolution, you can make resolutions all day long, I mean, doesn't hold you to anything. So this is, I mean, you can vote yes on this resolution, and then turn around and vote no on the bill.
But this is the bill.
No.
The resolution.
The next one's the bill.
2446 is listed as bill.
Right, but that's not what we're talking about right now, we're talking about the resolution.
Okay.
So the resolution, you can vote yes on the resolution.
Resolution of bill to ordinance.
So she's asking for you to say yes, that she's, she's stating the facts and reasons why she wants to change these items in the budget. So she's saying, yes, I want to change these items in the budgets, and these are the reasons why. So you can say, yes, we agree with the reasons why you want to change it, that's fine, and then the next, the next section is saying, I want to change this as a law and reason why, and you can say, okay, but we don't agree with that, and we're going to say no. Fine, the resolution does her absolutely no good, because you guys already said no or yes, whatever it may be, so you're going to say yes. The bill is the law, resolution just states what her reasoning, reasonings are.
Okay, I just think it's good we get some clarification for the general public as well, because once again, we're all a little confused lately with the sequence.
Yeah, this is a brand new thing.
Resolutions to bills, to ordinances, et cetera.
This is brand new, stating facts and reasons on why you need the bill for a budget, for budget amendments. Only for budgets, yes. Resolutions are only for budgets. You don't need a resolution for any other ordinance, like, any other changes only for budget amendments.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Alderman Hoffman, I kind of thought you'd gone away in.
Tara, is it state mandated that we have to do it this way?
That's true, yes.
Okay. Fair enough, thanks.
Any other questions?
I'll approve the ordinance so I can miss my questions.
All right, our motion to the resolution, we have a motion to approve the resolution by Alderman Rucker, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? All right, the resolution has passed, now the bill or law, that's the way I always figure, I mean, whenever I said bill, just put law in the way, in its way, and that's the way I remember it. So Bill 25-46, An Ordnance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance number 24.93, adopting the 2025 annual budget by removing and adding job title within the fiscal year 2025 employee pay plan for public works, again, city administrator Devon Lake.
Again, like we talked about at the discussion last time, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I've got questions again.
Oh, you have questions, all right.
Once again, I'm just questioning the process, so we passed this bill, and basically we're moving these positions onto different pay scales, which means obviously that it's going to be additional funds needed in the budgeting for that department. Are you going to follow up now with an amendment to the budget for personnel for the department, since we're doing different pay scales?
No, like I stated earlier, there will be no monetary budget amendment needed.
Okay.
The current budget will cover this.
Alderman Rucker.
Okay, first of all, I don't understand how the budget's going to cover it, because is it, is it only going to cover it because we've had vacancies?
Yeah, we've had, yeah, basically.
Because other than that, if we kept this exact, if we kept, if we go ahead and proceed with this as you presented it, and then next year in 2026 budget, we approve that budget with no pay increase to anybody, this line item on this budget would be raised.
By one person.
By one person, so there is an impact to the budget. It's just, the only reason there's not a budget, the only reason there's not an impact now is because we've had vacancies. If we had not had vacancies in that department, there would be an impact, and I thought there would still be an impact, because I thought, under the budget process that we went through this last time, you were funding for 100% of every position.
We were, and that's why there does not need to be a budget amendment.
Just so the board understand, I mean, there's not, there's not, we're not going to spend more money this year, but we're going to spend more money next year on this department if we don't give no raises and don't do nothing else. So there, it's going to cost us about another $100,000. I'm not opposed to what's going on here, I just want to make sure that we're all kind of on that, on that page, so we all understand that.
April.
And right now, the sewer superintendent position has not been filled, and you all had approved a water slash transportation superintendent, so really, these guys are just taking those positions, you know, we're splitting out water and transportation, so that instead of three superintendents, it's now going to be called, you know, supervisor. And so then that, we won't hire three foremen, you know, those will become crew leaders, and you all had already improved in the budget two crew leaders or two foremen, which are now going to be called crew leaders, so that's why it's only a net add of one person, and because we're not, we haven't filled the sewer superintendent position or the water transportation superintendent, so it's kind of like a promotion as well, so that's also why there's no budgetary implications.
I understand that, okay. Alderman Rucker, job descriptions, we have job descriptions for all six of these positions?
Well, the foreman is a title change, so it will be the foreman, job description will now be the crew leader job description.
That, that job description will just change with the name?
Right, and then we already had superintendent job descriptions, and that will be changed to supervisors.
So, so, so that's, yeah, but that was a super, we had a superintendent job description and a transportation water job description.
Right.
So those would just be name, name changes?
And then the water and, and transportation will be split.
Okay. Another question. So we are adding a body, it's going to be, next year it's going to be about, about 90 to 100. Okay, the other question I have is on the organizational chart, and I realize, well, I'm not going to, no, I'm not going to say that. This board is, part of this board dealt with this issue during the budget process, and was greatly concerned of one person supervising another person, and that's what this does. This has one person supervising, and two of the supervisors will be supervising just one person, because your transportation will be supervising one foreman, and your water supervisor will be supervising one foreman, and that was a stickler and was raised pretty heavy at, at the budget. I personally have mixed feelings on it as well, I'm not, I don't know, I have concern with that, with one person supervising just one. Can you give us any thought on that, Devon?
Well, I mean, I guess I'm kind of looking at it from, crew leader is a field position, so they're going to be, you know, in the, in the field doing that portion, where the supervisor is doing the office side procurement, talking to contractors, I mean, ultimately it funnels up, so even the, the techs will answer eventually to the supervisor. So, I mean, the two, two different functions.
Okay. All right, I'll allow anybody else speak, I've got to put my thoughts together on that.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Hoffman.
Couple things, one, are we eliminating the foreman position then, or is it moved to supervisor and, and crew leaders, and there is no more foreman?
Foreman will now be called a crew leader.
Okay, so we won't have any more foreman?
No, the title will be gone.
Okay. So I originally thought that this was within the budget, and I kind of suspected that next year we were going to be paying for this, which ultimately is what Alderman Rucker brought up. Not really opposed to this, but I, I think, and this is probably going to come up in strategic planning meeting, which is July, correct? So might as well just throw this out here now, that looks to me like, well, we're already adding $100,000 in salary next year, so I'm just concerned that, you know, I love our staff, and they're doing great, but we, we keep finding reasons to move people up and supervisor positions and adding staff, and we got to make sure that we can pay for that. And I'm just throwing my concern out now, after hearing that we are really adding $100,000 next year, I think this is still the right thing to do, but I think this is a concern that we should start to look at now and expect to come up in strategic planning.
Any other questions, Alderman Rucker?
One of the concerns that was brought forth was the fact that the foreman felt like that they were handcuffed by their title and couldn't really respond to the people. How is that going to be rectified with the people now coming to the crew leader? Is it just felt that the crew leader title doesn't mean they should know more, I mean, because that was one of the, one of the things that was brought forth, that, that, that title change needed to be changed to help that out.
So this isn't saying that the supervisors won't ever be in the field, this is just saying that they're going to start taking on the responsibilities of the paperwork side and, and the office work side versus being in the field, that's their struggle right now, is they're being pulled from the office side and the field side, where they have people underneath them that have the experience to handle the field side, but they're always going to be there to help them when they need it. So I, I think this ultimately fixes that problem of them being pulled in multiple directions, but also having the experience in the field to be able to address issues if they can't be there.
Lastly, but not least, I'm concerned at how these positions are going to be filled, from what I heard at the last meeting. My hopes would be that they would be filled by the fact that we would advertise, like we do any other position, that we want, we have three, we have a sewer supervisor, a water supervisor, transportation supervisor available, and see who applies. And then go from there, and then the same with the crew leaders, assuming that the people that are foremen now move up, assuming that, and then we would apply, ask for the position of crew leaders, and let people apply for crew leaders. One of those people that's a foreman may not want to move up, there may be somebody within the ranks that is better qualified to be a supervisor than the three foreman. I just think that if we don't go through that normal process like that, we're setting some kind of a precedent, and I'm concerned, and not trying to take away anything from the supervisors, and I, it's a very delicate subject right now to talk about, because we're talking about people, and we're not supposed to talk about people in an open session, we're supposed to be talking about positions.
So I am 100% on board for advertising for the crew leader, but the problem is, by doing this, you're eliminating the foreman position, so they, their position no longer exists anymore. So in my mind, those three positions are now, their title's being changed and it's moved up a pay level. Now the crew leader, yes, that can be advertised and competitively hired on, but this eliminates the foreman, so they would no longer technically have a title.
I disagree, because you're saying that the foreman job description is not changing, so if the foreman's job description is not changing, we could change that, change that to crew leader and not change any of the people, we're changing just their title. We've changed other titles within this organization and have, and have not eliminated that position, we did that with IT and other ones, we gave them a different title because we felt that more appropriate, so if you change just the title, you could take the three foremen and their crew leaders tomorrow.
Yeah, we could do that.
I just don't want to set any precedent different, and I feel like we're going down a bad road that way, with doing it that way, and that, I've spoken enough. Maybe I'm going to want to.
Alderman Osteen. Alderman Osteen.
I think it comes down to semantics, whether we basically are trying to fill new positions versus promoting. I think that's the fine line there, because we're not, we are promoting those individuals, which is not necessarily a new position, it's just a new title, correct?
No, they would be moving up a pay level.
That is true. So it's a fine line, whether, once again, whether it could be looked at as basically there is being promoted to a position versus filling a position, which would go back into wanting to have that publicly advertised, et cetera. So I understand what Alderman Rucker was stating, but I'm trying to wrap my head around the easiest path from A to B.
April.
So, and Gina's done this in the past, where she has put people in positions. So Devin does have that authority, according to the Section 125. I mean, you all can ask her to do it otherwise, or whatever we can, and we can even just keep it internal, you know, list the position internally, but, you know, all three of the current foremen do have the minimum qualifications of the superintendent. You know, that superintendent job description or title is just changing to supervisor, so she definitely has that authority, according to ordinance, to put them in there. But yeah, the intention was for the crew leader, we were going to list that internally, so that, you know, the rest of the crew could apply.
Then only after they apply for the position, isn't that after we put it out there that we, that we want the position filled, that the city administrator has the authority to just, to fill it after someone has applied?
That's not the way I read it. Uh-uh. And that's kind of how Maddie, you know, Gina did with Maddie for HR. Same kind of process there.
Mr. White, do you have something to add?
I was just going to add, I was the recipient of one of those employees years ago, just a week, we did advertise, and a secretary was placed in my department by the city administrator without any advertising. That is, we're going to deal with that.
Alderman Hoffman.
I just got a little bit of, excuse me, a little pollen. Just want to kind of get this right. Their job is not changing at all, but we are giving them a promotion.
Their job is changing.
Their job is changing too, right?
Giving them a raise.
So we're giving them a promotion, a raise, changing their title, and the job description is changing too?
Yes.
And we're losing the foreman position entirely?
The foreman job description will change, will be, will stay the same and be changed to a crew leader.
And that, okay, so, but we won't have foreman, and that's now crew leader?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it's not, doesn't look great to give people a promotion or raise, but they're doing the exact same thing they were two weeks ago?
No.
Okay. All right. That's all I needed, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Collins.
Can we see the description? Can we, can we see this on paper, like what they did as foreman, what they're going to be doing as supervisor? I think it's going to clear up a whole lot of confusion if we can see the difference between, here's what they were doing before, here's their job description, here's what they have been doing, because I know they've been doing this work without it, but here's what their job description would be as supervisor, so that everybody can see what, what we're actually changing.
Yeah, I'll be happy to send that out. Job descriptions are typically an internal function.
Okay.
But I'll be happy to send that out. But, but basically, the, the sum of it is fieldwork, office paperwork, dealing with contractors, being in the trenches versus being in the office.
But that is not their normal job description as a foreman. They're only doing that because they're filling the role because we don't have it. So their normal job would not be doing that.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. If there's no other comments or questions, do you have a motion to approve first reading?
Motion.
Alderman Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Let's do a roll call though, please. I'm confused, yes.
Alderman Rucker?
I'm as well, Bob, but we're going to have a second that we can change, and hopefully this information will be provided to us between now and then, so, um, yes.
Colin, Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Varela?
Yes.
Alderman Rose?
All right, first reading, Bill 25-46 passes. Next, we're going to move on to Bill 25-47, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Chapter 125 Human Resource System Personnel Rules and Regulations, Section 125.120, attendance and leave policies as set forth. They're asking for a first and second reading. Who's going to take this one for Maddie? April.
Yes, Mayor, members of the board. We're all about public works tonight, so this is just a minor ordinance change to include public works in the ordinance that already reads, you know, for airports and, and police and dispatch and ambulance, but from Memorial Day to Labor Day, public works shifts to four 10s. So for those holidays, historically, they've only been getting eight hours of pay. So this would mimic their actual shift, so that they're getting compensated the 10 hours of holiday pay, which is what they would normally work from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Recommend approval, can answer any questions.
Alderman Hoffman.
Just a comment. I know this is a very simple one, but the board's given pretty clear direction. First and second readings need to be at a minimum.
And I apologize for that, but the timing of it, Memorial, we won't have another meeting before Memorial Day, so that's why we're asking for first and second reading.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying.
Alderman Rucker.
I don't know how to do the floor amendment. Settle down, Tara.
Oh, no, no, I was, sorry, I was just clearing my throat, so I could just, I was waiting to answer. Nope.
Because I don't know how I would word it, but I guess, why are we calling out public works? Why can't we make this for anybody? In other words, if all of a sudden, two years from now, public works, works, changes it to only eight hours, or, or, or somebody at some other department, you know, changes it to 12 or whatever, I mean, the dispatch is 12 hours, so I guess, I'm not opposed to this, I'm trying to just figure out, how can we just not do something where it, it'll take care of everything in the future, but if, if, if all of a sudden, the person is assigned that holiday to work a 14-hour shift, then they should get paid 14 hours of holiday pay for that, if, if they're normally working a 14-hour shift during that timeframe, because that's basically what they're doing here. They're normally working a 10-hour shift during that timeframe.
They're already covered, I mean, so we're, we're just adding public works to this.
And the way it reads, says...
Ambulance, 911, law enforcement, receive 12. I mean, that, that's current practice, and if that practice changes, then we would come back to the board with a, a change, but we, I mean, this, this reflects, you know, that this avoids the situation where, you know, if you have a, let's say you had a rogue supervisor in any of the departments who schedules all of their people for 16 hours on Memorial Day, and we're, we're spelling out, here's what's normal, here's what's expected, and, and it is different. It's 12 for the public safety side, it's eight or 10 for airport and public works, but it's, but it says, depending on their predetermined work week hours. So it is, it is already flexible.
But it also doesn't cover the rest of the staff?
Yeah, we don't have, the, the rest of the staff doesn't work more than eight. I mean, on, on, on a, isn't scheduled, isn't scheduled to work more than eight.
I totally, I was going to, it doesn't cover any other, if...
The clerk's, the clerk's office is not scheduled, is never scheduled more than eight.
It has that in here. All full-time employees shall receive eight hours holiday pay except, and then that's when it starts talking about the...
I was just trying to figure out a way to do this and blanket it and be done, you know, and not have something fall between the cracks, sorry. I'm, I'm not opposed to it.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I motion to approve first reading?
Motion.
Alderman Varela, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, second reading, same bill, 25-47, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Chapter 125 Human Resource System Personnel Rules and Regulations, Section 125.120, attendance and leaves policies as set forth. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I motion to approve second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, second. Alderman Collins, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Varela?
Yes.
Alderman Rose?
All right, first and second reading, Bill 25-47 passes. Next, we have a resolution. We all know what that is, right?
Not a rule, not a law.
Sorry. Sorry about that. All right, resolution, 2025-16, a resolution of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, applying for the Missouri Blue Shield Public Safety Accreditation Program. Who wants this one?
Lieutenant O'Day.
Lieutenant O'Day, please.
So I get to read the entire resolution?
Yes. You can summarize if you like.
What's that?
You can summarize if you like.
All right. So the Blue Shield program was start, or not started, but signed in executive order by Governor Kehoe, and it is to recognize cities that are taking a proactive stance on crime fighting, things of that nature. By being a part of the program, it will also allow us to receive grants and training and things of that nature, and by adopting this resolution, this is one of the first steps that we need to take to become a member of that program.
Very good. All right. Comments or questions for anyone? Alderman Rucker.
So it's all income, no ex, no, no, no expenditure out?
I haven't seen any expenditures yet, but, I mean, it's, it's new, so.
Right.
They just, they just show the grants and the training is the big push, and recognizing cities that are taking a aggressive stance against crime.
Anyone else? Seeing none, do I motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Varela, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, resolution, 2025-06 passes. Next, we have a resolution, 2025, a resolution of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the city's staff and consultants to take certain actions with respect to the proposed Angler's Outpost project. And we have some representatives here tonight, but on a personal note, I wanted to thank the folks from Angler's Outpost to be here tonight. I know they presented a show, a slideshow, some information, and we have Mark Spikerman, but I'm excited about the project. We've been talking about this for several months, and I'm going to let you tell, tell you all about it, but it's going to be great for our community and great for the people that come down here and for the boating world, so. You want to come on up, Dan, and if you don't mind, state your name with a microphone up there? For the folks at home, because we are live, so.
Thank you, Mayor, and the vote. I represent, I'm Sri Madala, and I'm representing a group from, that does a lot of real estate development in the country, and we are very excited to come to this community here with a very specific cause and need that has been missing with Angler's, a community that one of our people that we are here, have here is also...
Oh, can you, I'm sorry, can you speak up just a little bit, please?
Sure.
There you go, yep.
Okay, is this better?
That's much better, thank you.
Wonderful, I'm sorry. So if you want me to start, I can re...
Nope, we're good.
Okay. So Angler's outpost is a project that is catering to the community that is very underserved and has also been a, a, a project that is lacking, you know, so the areas where we wanted to serve are very specific to the Anglers. And we have been working with the city, thank you for the last 15 months, it's been 15 months since we've been working with this project, and appreciate everything that has been given in terms of the partnership, extending the support that I have, we worked with several of you around here. And last but not the least, I want to introduce my fellow partner here, Tom Lloyd Jr., who has the vision for this project, and it's been a project that started from a small beer conversation.
Thanks, Sri, and thank you all for entertaining this as well. But my name's Tom Lloyd Jr. I live in Springfield, Missouri, but am a very frequent patron here to Lake of the Ozarks, and come in here for pretty much all my life, but, you know, the big thing is, is I'm super pumped about this project and excited about this. I travel all around the country, tournament fishing, hence the garb that I'm wearing here. Typically, I would be in a, you know, polo or something like that, but in any event, you know, this is a big deal for anglers, and a lot of anglers that I've mentioned this to, of course, didn't want to tell a lot of people about it, because I want this to be the first. I want Osage Beach to be the headquarters of Angler's Outpost and the first thing of its kind. We're going to have 24 units of, of sleeping accommodations, nightly rentals, much like Airbnbs, but on steroids. So the big thing is, for us as anglers, is a place that we can safely and securely store our boats. You guys do a great job, thank you, sir, for, you know, policing the area and whatnot, but we all know that it, things happen. So we wanted to pull garages, pull our boats and trucks into these garages, they're 60-foot long, pull all the way through, you got your two-bedroom, two-bath, so when I'm there with my partner, he's not waking me up snoring, I'm not waking him up snoring, and that's just the way it goes. So, you know, this is a big deal for us, and across the country, there's nothing else like this, anywhere in the country. We're also going to have a little bit of fun in there as well. You know, it's set up for tournament anglers, a lot of tournament anglers like to golf, so we're going to throw a little simulator bay in there, but really, ultimately, it's a safe spot for everybody to keep their boats and truck, boats and trucks, come down to Lake of the Ozarks, spend the money on the gas, spend the money on the food, do all the things that we're, we're doing, but have a great place to do that, and also drive more tournaments here, and more tournaments specifically to Osage Beach. For those of you that don't know, there's a lot of tournaments that go out of Shawnee Bend, or, you know, Gravoy Mill, or Down by the Dam, things like that. This is going to bring those tournaments to Osage Beach, bar none. I'll turn it over to our project development lead, Dan.
Yeah, I'm Dan Buck, I am helping on the development side of this. I'm happy to report it is 100% fully designed, all architectural DDs and CDs are completed. We're about 80% engineered, we still have a little bit of work to do on our utility engineering, but we'll be there in about three to four weeks. Of course, we'll turn those over to the city for approval and, and review. The holdup, obviously, you guys probably saw the land cleared, when we, shortly after we bought the land last February, and we cleared the land about two months following that, and it's been cleared for quite a while. The holdup has been financing simply because of where it's located. We are a little bit challenged, the fact that it is in what they call a dead zone. It has been a blighted and, and difficult place since the new highway went in, that, that portion of Highway 54 has seen some businesses leave, have seen some depreciation, I guess you would say, of that area. We're excited, we were committed to that spot simply because of its proximity to the PB2 entrance, it's only a half mile from the turnoff, which is perfect for these fishermen to get in and out quickly. So we stayed the course, we are now fully financed and committed and ready to turn the corner in, in June. It is conditional on the Chapter 100. The Chapter 100 is a key piece of this financing package with the banks, and I just hope you understand that we are committed to this community. And I can't tell you, we had a lot of choices, a lot of lakes we could have taken our first project to, a lot of communities wanted this to be the first one in their communities, but we picked here simply because of your pro-tourism, your pro-business approach, your team has been great to work with, and we just know that this is the right place for Angler's Outpost. So we are happy to answer any questions, we'll be here throughout your meeting, if anything comes up in the dialogue, don't hesitate to ask us to come up and answer any questions you might have. But again, thank you to the city of Osage Beach for opening your arms and welcoming truly one-of-a-kind special place for anglers that'll come from, you know, throughout the Midwest and really from throughout the country to stay with us. Thanks.
Thank you. Cole, you want to kind of talk about what we're, resolution here?
Sure.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. What you have in front of you is a resolution, not an ordinance, authorizing city staff and city consultants to prepare the documents necessary for a Chapter 100 tax abatement for final action by the board, which we would estimate to be sometime, hopefully, next month. Chapter 100 is a tax abatement similar to what we did with the Preserve at Sycamore Creek Apartments, although it is a different mechanism, it gets us to something of the same place. This is structured financially different than that one. Number one, we have, the developer has agreed to continue paying all existing property Number one, we have, the developer has agreed to continue paying all existing property taxes on the property as it sits today, so there will be no decrease in revenue, no matter what happens. And second of all, there is a, 5% of the increased value will be paid on top of that once construction begins, once the property is reassessed, once built. That way, the taxing districts, the county, the school, the SB 40 board, and so on, all share in some of the increase. We negotiated this heavily with the developer, we went back and forth with several different versions of this, and this is something that we settled on. Myself, Mark Spikerman, Jeff White have all taken a hard look at this, and we are comfortable with it as an appropriate level of incentive for this project, given the developers' risks and the uniqueness of the project. As you all know, the location of the project, of the proposal, of the proposed project is past KK on the, right as the, as the parkway goes down to three lanes. It is a challenging lot, there is a lot of rock there, it is wedged between Dollar General, the parkway, and the expressway, and it is not a prime piece by any stretch. So to be able to get a, an attraction that will draw tourism to the lake, that will generate sales tax for the city, is really a big win for the city and part of why we're so supportive of this. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, Mark Spikerman's on as well, and we are available for your questions and comments.
Alderman Hoffman. Let me just start with, what are certain actions?
Certain actions, preparing all the documents, drafting, there's going to be, there's quite a few documents that the board will approve if the board decides to go forward with this Chapter 100.
So this is to prepare the documents for them to bring a proposal to the board?
So we've worked out the term sheet, which is in here, we've already agreed, handshake, if you will, on what we believe to be an appropriate level of incentive. So we're asking the board to authorize us to prepare all the documents, and there are quite a few, there's lease, leaseback deeds, bond documents. So to do all of that legwork, there's also notices that need to go out, legal notices, and so that, those are the certain actions.
I guess my second question is how deep do we wanna go here tonight? Is this simply to, is this the appropriate time to get deep into this, or is this the time where we're just giving you authorization to get the process starting so that we could get into the details at a later date?
I mean, if the, if the detail, if, I think a certain amount of detail would be appropriate tonight, because this is go for final approval, so if there's, you know, if-
Then I have a lot of questions.
All right, have at it.
So, let me start with, has anyone contacted or have we reached out to the school district?
No, that would be one of the notices that goes out probably tomorrow if this is approved.
Okay, then candidly, have any of you spoke to anyone at Camden County schools? If you would, please.
Yes, please come on up. I should say, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Obviously, it's a little premature to go to the actual school district or the superintendent. What we will clearly articulate to them is that we are a zero-neutral development, meaning we're not housing, we bring no new children into this development, we will create no new income or expenses to the school district by this type of development, it's strictly tourism. And we also have agreed to pay all existing tax, so it will be a, no, you know, no loss whatsoever to the current school district and no long-term impact, because it's not a permanent housing where we're bringing new children into the, into the district.
Okay, so if it's a Chapter 100, that means that the, the school is losing out on tax money, am I correct?
The school will not lose any tax money that it's getting right now, so they, so the developer will be paying-
But it would not get any tax money moving forward from the project?
It will get 5% of any increase.
Okay, so right now-
And after 10 years, they get the full, you know, we're going to 100% in year 11, so.
So I have been on record stating this before, and I will, I will put it out there right now, I will not vote yes on any tax incentive, or very likely, without school being at least notified and involved in the process, not necessarily saying that they have to say yes. But it's something that I feel like we have not done a good job with here in Osage Beach. I'll take some of the credit for that, too, and I wanna make sure the school is involved in the very beginning. That is not a detriment toward you, towards you guys at all. So next question would be, how many rooms? You know, if we, if we have a hotel coming in, we know we've got 150 rooms, how many rooms do you have?
There are 48 sleeping rooms, 24 suites. Usually anglers like Tom come in in pairs. So it's a one rental, four to two bedroom suite, so think of it as like an Airbnb. It's not an Airbnb, but it is like, run like a hotel. So there's 48 sleeping rooms in Phase 1, three additional buildings would bring that to 42 total units, so 84 sleeping rooms.
And how many year-round employees are you expecting to bring on?
Probably four to five full-time employees when you include the marketing team.
Four to five employees, full-time, that's all you need to run that place?
Yeah, yeah.
Really?
We have, you have your house manager in two to three full-time, depending on your occupancy, you know, running two to three full-time maid, and we will probably use local contractors for things like service and upkeep and painting and things like that, landscaping. We will not be a crew onsite.
So then, as we all know, hotels are a home run, VRBOs are not. So will this, will this project be, be approached the same way a hotel room?
It's a hotel.
It is a hotel?
It is, yes.
Okay. And what about the infrastructure being around it, such as the sidewalks, the roads? How was?
There's, the utilities are onsite, the road is more than, more than capable of handling the traffic in the area. It's literally right where that turn lane at Dollar General ends.
Okay.
But it's on, it's on a very quiet end of the parkway, so-
What's your, what's your target date to be open as of right now?
Probably December or January of this, come here.
Of this year?
Mm-hmm. I mean, we're, we're ready to go. I mean, we're teed up, from the minute we close, we're starting to move dirt, so. I was just gonna show you that site plan real quick, just to show you the, do we have the full map? Nope, we only have the parcel map. But this is the location, just so you know, Dollar General's like on our campus, which is great for the fishermen, they're always gonna need supplies, they're gonna need their beer, there will be, they will be a huge retail boost to the Dollar General, I assure you.
I'm very familiar with their property, I grew up here, and you're in my ward, and I used, I used to track deer through there, so I get it.
Probably could track some right now.
Probably so, they're everywhere. All right, so are you planning on being open year-round, or would you be closing December, closing January?
Yeah, no question, Tom can address that, the fishing season does not stop.
It does not, correct.
That was the whole goal, is that to give us a spot to come year-round. I mean, there's Bass and Bob Tournament all year long, you know, in the winter time anyway, there's plenty of tournaments to be had, for sure.
Okay, and do you know, I guess we can ask this, what your overall, what you think this project is gonna cost?
It's in the packet, it's about 11 million.
Phase 1, we're about 8 million, so, and then Phase 2 will be about another 5 to 6.
I saw an 8 million in there, but I wasn't sure if that's-
That's Phase 1, yep.
Okay.
Could you repeat, I'm sorry, I wasn't, man?
8 million dollars in Phase 1, and then another 5 million in Phase 2.
So I'm, I'm just gonna-
Could be 6, depending on the cost of materials and things like that.
I'm just gonna say this, because I think it needs to be said, that we have to be careful about, about giving tax incentives on projects that, you know, it's a $13 million project, is that a large enough project? Does it bring enough to the table to give tax incentives to put taxpayer money into that? And I'm concerned when there's four or five employees year-round coming in, that that's not exactly driving the workforce or creating jobs. And, you know, how much is it to just build a muffler shop? Is it, is it 10 million dollars? I don't know. And I'm not saying that I'm a no on your project, I'm just bringing up concerns, these are concerns that I've had, you know, I wasn't here from the inception of the other two projects, and this one I am. And I think that we need to really dive into how we're going to represent the taxpayers' money. So that's all I've got for now.
And I think Alderman Hoffman, if I could just kind of address that, there is no taxpayer money coming to us. It is a tax abatement of what would be future taxes. If this project doesn't move forward, the taxes on that property will remain exactly as they have been for 35 years. It has never been developed.
Well, sure, but obviously, this is a vital part of your plan, or you would not be telling us that you're walking away if you don't get it.
No, no question, the numbers don't work, and that's why the, the Section 8 was put in place by the state of Missouri, was to give communities, to give communities the opportunity to do these types of incentives and to do these types of things without having to have the blessing of school districts or taxing districts who would sometimes run roadblocks, because they wanted the future revenues. Well, in our agreement with Cole and with the city, we have agreed to increase, we're gonna pay 5% for the first 10 years while we stabilize and get 2, 13 million dollars worth of investment put in the property. Once it's stabilized, we're gonna be able to pay 100% of that, it's a slide-out scale in years 11 through 15, and you're gonna be, you know, they're gonna be getting significantly more tax money than they ever would have done had this incentive not been put in place. We can't do the project without the incentive, the banks won't finance it.
Fair enough. So unless there's any objections, I'm gonna reach out to a couple of friends on the school board and just discuss with them.
Yep, Cole, you had something else?
Yeah, I wanna add two things real quickly. One is something I forgot when we were describing the plan, there is, as you'll see in the packet, there is a five-year step down for years 11 through 15, that is contingent on Phase 2 being built. So Phase, so there is, so we do have an incentive for them to get the project built. And of course, the sooner they build Phase 2, the more of that 95% benefit they get. So we, so while it is, you know, we are setting it, we still do have a hook, if you will, to encourage, to incentivize the developer to build Phase 2, and build Phase 2 as quickly as possible. And hopefully, we have, you know, hopefully, it's very successful and they see the need for the additional demand for the rooms immediately. The second thing I wanted to answer is your question about, you know, is, what's the number? Is it 10 million, is it 20 million, is it 50 million? We don't look at the need for incentives that way, in terms of total project value. Yes, we do see the 84 sleeping rooms as being a major benefit, because that, when it's at 100% occupancy, that's 84 or 168 people in town spending money and who are here to spend money. But the analysis that Columbia Capital does for us and did for us on this project is not driven by the total dollars invested, it's driven by their financial projections and the return on investment. So we're trying to, we use incentives only to make projects that are not viable viable, if that makes sense. And so that, that was the study that we did on this, and we did find that the abatement was appropriate, given the risk and the, I mean, this one has a much, as compared to some other project, you know, building a, let's say some Dollar General came in and said, we'd like to build a Dollar General. Dollar General knows what a Dollar General's gonna do in a given market within a pretty narrow window, they know what they're gonna perform. This is untested, this is not proven, so there is a much bigger range of outcomes. But on the whole, we did feel, we did feel comfortable, and Columbia Capital felt comfortable that this was an appropriate amount, given the debt, the site difficulties and the risks involved. So that's, that's how we evaluate, we don't look at it in terms of, you know.
I was getting that out there for the public, because I understand that, but the public is gonna go, you just gave tax incentives on a $13 million project, and my buddy down the road just built a garage and a muffler shop, and it was $9 million, and he couldn't get it. And that's a common thing coming from our constituents, and I think that we have to at least acknowledge that before we make these decisions.
And we can only consider the ones where people ask, there is a certain economies of scale, I mean, there's a certain point at which it's, you know, for the attorney's fees that they've invested with Hush to work on this, that, you know, it's gonna, it's really hard to make the math work on a $1 million job. It, you know, it doesn't make sense to spend $100,000 in attorney's fees on that. So, I mean, there is a certain amount, but we don't favor people, you know, you know, $500 million developers over $10 million developers. If they can make the math work and it makes sense to us, that, that's what we're evaluating the project on, its merits and its percentage. And, you know, if somebody wants to spend $9 million in Osage Beach, we're happy to listen to their proposals and see what they have to say.
Well, gentlemen, I-
These folks approach us.
I am, I think it's a very interesting project, and I just wanna make sure that it is right for our taxpayers and our, and again, I'm very concerned that we make sure that the school is heard, they don't necessarily have to agree, but alienating them is not an option for me. Thank you.
Alderman Rucker. Couple of things, first of all, I would say to you, Alderman Hoffman, that the city over the past 17 and a half years that I've been here has always reached out to our, our taxing districts, whether that's the road district, the school district, the fire district, the other people that are involved when we entertain any kind of situations that involve their taxes. So we have done that, we have not, you know, we have not alienated the school district or the fire district or any of them, we've followed the letter of the law, and we've done what we were supposed to. We can't be notifying them before we have something brought to us, even though these people have been working with our staff for a number of months, I don't feel it's appropriate at that time for our staff to be sharing with other taxing districts their plans. Those are closed-door sessions that cannot be shared, because four months ago, somebody might have started sharing, said, oh, wait a second, we're gonna sneak in the door and do it. So they can't share that stuff. That's, that's, that's not fair to the business people that have got this, I don't mean negatively dream, pipe dream, that turns out to be a reality. So we, our staff has to be closed lips. Kerry Patterson will preach to you about that, if you just give him a chance, because he's been down that road many times and many times. So we have brought the districts on board as soon as we are capable, are legitimately able to ethically do that. So the school district maybe not being in favor of it is, is one thing, but we have done a good job doing that, and we have not alienated them. I definitely disagree with you on that statement, the city has not done that in the past. Mark, or Cole, either one, does this go through a similar situation of a but for, like the, like the TIF?
I can handle that, Cole, if you like.
Sure.
The TIF Act builds its but for into the statute by law, so you have to do it. Chapter 100 does not, although almost every city, including Osage Beach, as a matter of good public policy, requires a, you know, the facts be there to show but for.
And that's what we did to that, this, on this one, too, that's what I mean when I say we, we felt that this was an appropriate level but for.
The, I guess, the work that has been done by Columbia Capital and by, by Mark Spikerman's group, et cetera, there's been some expense created, has that been, did we sign an agreement already?
We did a funding agreement in November of last year.
I'm sorry, I forgot it.
Yep, it's been since November, but yes, and we're, we've, I know we've gotten Columbia's bill, I don't think we have Mark's bill yet.
That's fine, I just couldn't remember I was doing, I was, and I thought, wait a second, so, okay.
No taxpayer dollars have been spent on this.
Okay, that, that's fine, I'm, I'm good. With being said, with all that being said, will, at what point does the board get an opportunity to look at those, especially some of the questions that Oliver Hoffman had brought up in reference to the funding and projected, et cetera? Those reports are, are information that we have on a TIF, and I know this is not a TIF, you know, we get all that document stuff.
I'm sure we'll have, Mark, we'll probably have Jeff here for the actual ordinance readings, but we have a full write-up from Columbia Capital, I'm happy to share with you.
We have the write-up from Columbia Capital, we also, if the board moves forward today, we'll have a cost-benefit analysis completed very, very promptly, which will show the impact of the abatement on all the taxing districts. They'll be receiving, you know, a certain level of payments in lieu of taxes during the abatement period, and it will show that, you know, our preliminary estimates, for example, because the existing property generates so little taxes, even during the first 10 years of the abatement, the, the school district will get roughly three times as much a year off the property.
Well, one of my concerns about that is the fact, it sounds like Oliver Hoffman is going to, in the next couple of days, be having conversations with some, with some school people, and I just wanna make sure we can provide him with some information to help him so that he can have all the information, because in past, that's where we have had some problems, is bad information that gets out there, as we know. So if we can make that available, so that Oliver Hoffman can become educated in that, so he can be able to answer the questions that those school people may, may ask, as, so they have the right information.
We've got quite a bit more than what's, what's in the packet. We've got quite a bit more than what's in the packet. And Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think right now, the property is paying about $4,000, just like $3,900 a year in property taxes. I mean, it's, and that's to all districts, not to the schools, only getting like $2,300 of that, something like that. So there, and it, but we've, that number's actually been going down, so by doing this, we are freezing it at that, so that number will stop decreasing on them, and then anything that gets built and reassessed into the property will add to what, and it's not just the school, the school gets over half of it, but it's the school, the county, the SB 40 Board, the fire district gets all of its money. So the fire district gets 100%. They're exempt, so.
Also, just-
That's right, Cole. And we have a draft of the cost-benefit analysis pretty much prepared. It'll be ready to go to, I'm sure it can be passed on to Oliver Hoffman, but it will go to all the taxing districts by law here in the next few days if you decide to move forward.
I know the answer, but I want to make sure, I think I know the answer. This will, this action to approve this abatement with the sliding scale and et cetera, et cetera, we have here, that is the responsibility of this board.
Correct.
And I don't mean to make this sound negative, but we don't have, it's not like the TIF where we have to have a hearing and we have to have the other taxing districts that, et cetera. I mean, I'm not saying we won't do that, but I'm just wanting to make sure that we understand, everybody understands that that's, this is different than the TIF process.
The Missouri Legislature has given the cities, including the city of Osage Beach, the sole discretion whether or not to use this tool.
I'll just say this, just for transparency, Alderman Hoffman, too, is that this may appear that all of a sudden we're surprising everybody with this, and I can tell, I don't know how many times Dan Buck and I talked, I'm standing on the deck at my house, and this is a negotiation process, and we negotiate. And myself, Mark Spikerman, Cole, Jeff White, all of us have been very adamant about not just the school taxing district, all of them. So that's why when we came to negotiation, we're like, at the very least, we need to hold tight, everything, they're being paid, and we even wanted more. So through that negotiation project, process, not only are they keeping all the taxes, they're going to make 5% more over 10 years, and then it's going to go through the roof. So the school has been talked about many times over the last 15 months, and we negotiated to make it fair for everyone.
Sorry, go ahead.
I want to circle back to a question I'd asked before. It's in two phases, and you said one was eight and one's about five. Which one is first, eight?
Eight's first.
What's the difference, and now there's the dollar, what's the difference between the eight and five? What's the five going to bring?
Phase one is the main building and 48?
Four buildings in phase one, three buildings in phase two.
So is phase two just additional, so there's 42 units in phase, 42 is total. So how many units are in phase one?
Forty-four in phase one, 18 more.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Alderman Osteen.
Just a few comments. I do support this development, and correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, circling back to employees and staffing, if I understood you, you stated you will have five full-time employees, but you also stated, though, just to clarify for the board, you are going to be contracting employees-
Oh, absolutely.
-here at the lake for cleaning services, landscaping, et cetera. So the five employees basically are just your Patriots Equity LLC employees, the entity that basically owns the development, then they will also contract out, though, full-time employees for everything else. So, Mr. Hoffman, you brought up a fact, five, I'm like-
That makes a lot more sense because I'm still going, five people, what?
You asked for employees, full-time employees. That, you obviously have a hard time, you have seasonal workers, you know, when you're packed every night, you've got more housekeeping, obviously. We'll have a housekeeping management, we'll have a name manager, a marketing manager, we'll have two on-staff maintenance supervisors on the site, including security.
Alderman Osteen. Gentlemen, it may help your cause with the board to get us more information regarding your projected employment overall, not just necessarily those employed directly by you, but the numbers of contracted employees for-
I think we have quite a bit of detail on that.
-landscaping and housecleaning, et cetera. Kind of sweetens the pot.
And Columbia Capital has reviewed our-
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else, Alderman Osteen?
No.
Alderman Collins?
I have a couple of questions. Assuming we say yesterday, what is the cost to the city for moving forward at this point?
Right now, none. These fine folks are paying for our consultants.
And that's with any developer that comes to you. We use their money to hire the outside resources.
Haven't been through this at all before, so have to ask the question.
My time is basically the cost.
Oh, so you're working for free?
To the city, not-
So the slideshow, it said there's two retail spaces and a clubhouse. Is that accurate?
Right, yeah. One of the buildings also has a small gap.
Yeah, it has a small retail building that will have two, retail, a small, probably eatery of some sort, and then we're hoping to get a, some type of a fishing store in there, and then it'll also have a small event space. We do plan to bring in quite a few corporate retreats during the week and team-building exercises, so to have another common area that we could use for events and those types of things that could hold 200, 300 people.
So the clubhouse would be just for people there? It's not like a sales tax producing?
No. Yeah, that does not have a retail component to it. It's just where the guys can lounge and hang out and play golf and play poker and play games and hang out together, so.
Understood. Thank you.
Alderman Hoffman?
Okay, a few more questions. One, let me just clarify, I didn't mean to insinuate earlier that the previous boards and staff didn't have a good relationship with the school. Just since I've been on here for the last two years, the relationship between Osage Beach and the school has been strained, and I think we've all been making progress from their side and our side on working better together, and I just want to see that that Can you just, so the public knows, and so refresh your course for me, exactly what's a chapter 100?
Chapter 100 is a tax abatement process, or, Mark, do you have an elevator speech on this that you could probably do it quicker than I can?
Sure. As Cole mentioned, it's available in your state statute. It's a tax abatement process in which title to the project is actually transferred to the city during the abatement period. City is a governmental entity, is a tax-exempt entity. Property taxes don't apply. City leases it back to the developer, developer operates it, and then makes payments in lieu of taxes or pilots at whatever agreed-upon level is negotiated, usually a percentage of what taxes would have been. And at the end of the tax abatement period, the city transfers the property back, title back to the company, goes right on the tax rolls again, and everything returns to normal.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Couple less questions, and I'll give up the mic. Are there tournaments that we don't have currently that you think that we'll get because you guys are here? Because we need to improve fishing here, so.
We would love the help, for sure. So I think really, you know, phase one is a big step towards that, right, is just having those accommodations close to PB2, right? I mean, if you look down the strip, there's a little bit, there's a little bit of lodging, but a lot of those folks are staying in those Airbnbs that you mentioned that aren't ideal, right, for the city. So having that, if I have a choice whether I'm staying in an Airbnb or a lodge called Angler's Outpost that's designed for us, I'm staying there every day of the week, period. And I know I'm just, I'm biased, you can say that, but phase two, bringing in this event space, that will 100% bring more tournaments, because all of those tournaments that I was talking about, that either aren't here right now or are in other parts of the lake, those are going to come to this area because they're going to have that event space to host there before the tournament dinner, the night before, the post-tournament dinner, award ceremonies, things like that. Having something designed, and if you, this is something that Grove, Oklahoma, did, is they built a huge boat ramp that's designed specifically for tournament fishing. If we bring things to this community, such as Angler's Outpost, such as other things like that, more of that will start happening, and then we will have more and more tournaments come.
Okay. So I'm just going to tell you what my concern here is. You know, I stay in touch with the hotels that are in my ward, and I speak to them often to find out how their rooms are going, especially during tournaments, and I know that they're not sold out every time we have a fishing tournament here. So it's going to be a problem for me if we're giving a tax incentive to a company, and that's now going to drive more people over there, and now Red Roof Inn and Schmitz Creek has even fewer people renting their rooms. So for this to work, to me, you've got to have more fishermen coming for the tournaments that are here and more tournaments coming, so that by us giving a tax incentive to you, we aren't hurting the little guy down the street. We're helping him, and that's something that I want to make sure we're doing.
Sure. I understand that, and I think by having this specific for anglers, we're not going to be, I mean, 24 rooms in a hunter boat tournament, that's not enough. I mean, there's still going to be that extra, you know, X amount of rooms that are available. I think the people that are going to stay at our resort are also the people that are using those Airbnbs today.
Or do you find a lot, do you expect them to be a lot of pros?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, 100%.
And they come with, do they come with teams along with them?
A couple people, yeah, a couple people. And ultimately, I mean, I think a big part of that is, to your point with the pros, I mean, there's going to be exposure on this like mad on social media-
Right.
-because of guys like me that travel around the country that are staying in other places. Airbnbs, I mean, we know that Airbnbs around this lake are tough on a boat and truck. To park a boat and a truck in most of the Airbnbs around here is rough, just because of the terrain.
Just parking your trailer at the hotels is tough, so.
I wasn't going there, but since you did, that's-
Well, it's true.
Well, I mean, to your point, though, I mean, the Red Roof Inn and the other businesses down here, it, there's no, the plugins are rough, being able to park is rough. I mean, that's part of the reason why they're not filling up, and I know that because I've tried to stay there.
Yeah, well-
So I think the onus is a little bit on that end, too.
We've got problems here with the fishing, and part of that is the loss of TC LA from two years ago. We've lost that money for marketing.
Absolutely.
It's harder, it's hard to fish on Saturdays at Lake of the Ozarks.
Can be.
So shoulder season is better.
Sure.
You know, it's not great for bass fishing in August anyway, personally, in my opinion. I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing with the tax, because when you say, "Well, we're going to be branding it, put all this good stuff out there," well, I can tell you what's coming from the other side.
Sure.
And that's the people who absolutely just don't want to see any kind of tax incentives.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing with our money and supporting a business that is helping all businesses grow.
And quite frankly, I mean, for us, it's going to be having those tournaments in those times that aren't popular right now, because now we have places that a guy can park his boat and truck when it's 10 degrees outside, he can park inside, now we can have a tournament.
Sure. Okay, just my last thing, then. Sorry, sorry. Thank you for all your candid answers. I appreciate it.
We also are going to host some tournaments. I mean, we're going to, you want to tell them that?
Yeah, absolutely. That's great.
Yeah, I mean, a big thing for us is to bring tournaments to the lake, too. I mean, ultimately, because the more tournaments we have, the more occupancy we're going to have in those times that don't have a tournament, right? So whether it's a midweek tournament, whether it's a, like you said, shoulder season stuff, yeah, father-son, high school tournaments, corporate events, that's a, I mean, you mentioned it, but that's where you're talking about, is having, bringing more people here, when we're talking about from, whether it's St. Louis, Kansas City, Springfield, having those events and filling that up, bringing people that have never been to Lake of the Ozarks.
Sure. I mean, I'd like to see college tournaments, high school tournaments. I mean, you can now take that as a class in high school, which I would have gotten straight A's in, I wish it was there.
Me, too.
Okay, well, again, thank you very much, gentlemen, I appreciate it. This last question, Cole, I want to clarify with what we're voting on tonight. We're vote, we are not green-lighting the project yet, correct?
Correct. You're giving, you're saying you're comfortable enough with it to direct staff to move towards a conclusion.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman?
Just one comment for everybody. This is really the first time that a tax abatement that we've really gotten into. We did one, one, but-
For the apartments.
On the apartments, but it, well, I would just say, this is the first time we've really gotten our teeth into it. So those questions from me has been not negative, it's been education. I just wanted to let you know that, that I'm in favor of this project. As Alderman Hoffman says, one of the things we always have to look at is, okay, I'm in favor of it, but how much am I in favor of it? How much is willing and right? And that's where some of this information from Capitol, Columbia Capital, excuse me, will help me out to solidify my feelings, and I appreciate the staff and all the work. And I know the mayor has done a lot of stuff on this project as well, and appreciate all the work you've done to bring this. And it is a unique project, or a unique area, and we're tourists, and we have to think outside the box. So I am in support of moving forward.
And if I can just add one final thought, this one was a good proposal. We worked through it, we threw lots of ideas back and forth at each other and found a happy medium where everyone was comfortable. We don't approve everything. I mean, we've had other applications for other incentives that we don't bring to the board because we don't think they, we can't recommend them. So we don't just, the city of Osage Beach does not give out incentives willy-nilly. We only bring the ones to the board that we believe are worthwhile. So there have been others that, since I've been here a little over two years, and we've probably shot down as many as we've, not as we've recommended.
Well, we knew this one was coming.
Well, you approved a funding agreement. That was our first sign of comfort.
Do you have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all very much. All right. The next one, folks, we are not going to read tonight. It's a motion on the salt, which we've had some, something arise, it's not, we're taking it off the agenda, correct?
Correct. Oh, it drew speech.
And to answer your question, Alderman Rucker, I believe all we need to do is not read it.
It's a motion. It's a motion, so we can simply, it'll, yeah, bypass it. No action taken. So it's not an ordinance, it's not holding up, holding an ordinance number for future reference.
Just move on.
Last item. Motion to approve the appointment of Jeff Fisher as Public Works Director for the city of Osage Beach. I'm going to take this one. As some of you may know or not know, some people at home, Public Works Director is an appointed position of the mayor with the advice and consent of the board. I've had several appointments over the last three years, and we've done them differently. This one, we received several applicants. I reviewed those, we picked those that we want to interview. I brought on Alderman Perella to the board. I've been talking to Alderman Hoffman, I know he's, he's been talking to some other folks, and settled on Mr. Fisher, who's out here with his girlfriend Esme. And I do want to, before we go this, go to the vote, and we can certainly ask questions, but when I saw his application, it was something that we had, I wanted to pick him before he came and interviewed, and we had several good applicants, we had some folks that were really nice gentlemen from surrounding towns, and I just knew Mr. Fisher was the one that I wanted to bring on board. And a little bit about his resume, I'm going to read, I'm not going to read everything, but he does have 20 years of experience leading small to large teams in the public sector. He had served as a Public Works Director at cities in two states. He was the Public Works Director in Green, where, what was it? What was the first one, Mr. Fisher? Green Valley. Then he was a Public Works Director in Belton, Missouri, and then Public Works Director in Kansas City, Kansas. And in 2015, when I receive applicants, I normally go down the rabbit hole, and I start, Googling is a wonderful thing, and you start looking at different things, but in 2000, December 15, 2023, there's an award they give out out of New York called the Marquee Award, but they went on to say that he had over two decades of excellence and leadership through Public Works, as a Public Works Director for the Unified Government Windock County. Prior to his role, he had served honorably in the United States Navy. He began his career as a staff engineer. City of Green Valley, 2023, similar role in Belton, Missouri. So when he came to interview, we took him around the city, and one thing that I had said was, myself and the board, some, one of the biggest things is getting the handle of our public works as far as the sewage- of of our public works as far as the sewage smell. And as well as we've done over the last few years, I know we've tried several different things. We have a lot of developments that come into town, and one of the first things we hear is, okay, you have all this development coming to town, but what about the smell? When are you going to fix the smell? And so going through this process, I said, A, number one, first priority, we need to get that under control and look at different options. One of the things in his interview that he said that that really impressed me when they asked my question was that he's data-driven. So before he comes to a board looking for something for funds, he brings data to back up those those requests. So with that being said, I did make the official appointment to Mr. Fisher. And so tonight, I bring to you folks for an approval, for a motion to approve the appointment, and then he'll probably start within about a week. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, or if I made the appointment, I just need a motion to approve and a second vote.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarity, and it's here in the packet, but level, it's it, bringing him on board according to the level 11, 12, 14?
Yeah.
Do we need to have that in the motion?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. That's the only reason I ask it.
And he's going to stick around and afterwards, but if we're going to have any comments or questions, do you have a motion to approve?
Motion. And I just want to say thank you for allowing me to sit in on the interview, and I think Jeff will be a great asset.
Thank you, Alderman Brille. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations, and yes. I'm standing to be sworn in later tonight, after the meeting, or we can do it right now?
We can do it right now.
What's that?
It's great to have another Navy guy, too.
All right, yeah, don't go anywhere, please. Afterwards, we'll swear you in and welcome aboard. All right. All right, next, we're going to move on to staff communications. We'll start with our city administrator, Devin Lake.
Just a couple of things I wanted to recognize our police department. This is National Police Week, so thank you for, to all of our officers for what they do, putting their lives on the line and showing up and protecting our community. The other thing is, we hired a new public information officer. She will be starting on Monday. So her name is Holly, and that's all I have this evening.
What was her name?
Holly.
All right. Assistant City Administrator, Big Point.
Yes, Mayor, members of the board. I just wanted to remind the Board of Aldermen and the mayor that open enrollment is open for city benefits, so you can do that online now, but it has to be done before the end of May. So if you have any questions, just reach out to HR Department, and they can help you or go by, come by, and they'll walk you through it as well. And I also wanted to recognize the police department for National Police Week. For Osage Beach, this equates to 30 employees, which is that I listed all of them for dispatch. I'm not going to do that for police, but chief, both lieutenants, three detectives, four sergeants, four corporals, 10 officers, two recruits, four administrative staff, and just super thankful for their daily devotion to each other, to the city of Osage Beach, and to her citizens. That's all I have.
And my wife texted me this afternoon and said she signed us all up online.
Oh, well, good.
Yeah, so.
Check that out.
I know. City Clerk.
I just want to let everybody know that myself and Keegan, my deputy, will be attending the International Institute for Municipal Clerks in St. Louis next week, so we'll be gone, but I will have my computer and be able to work from there. So if anybody needs anything, I'll be available.
All right, very good. Do you have anything, City Attorney?
Just wanted to say thanks to your team, and please tell Ernesto thank you as well. It's been a pleasure working with you guys, and we're glad we got it almost to the finish line. You know, we do work hard to make sure that the school's taken care of. I've got kids in the district, and, you know, we've tried to strike that careful balance between what's best for, you know, we want to get the project done and nothing more. And that's, I think, where we're at. And just wanted to say welcome, Jeff. Look forward to working with you. And that's all I've got tonight.
Very good. All right, Lieutenant O'Day, do you have anything?
Well, the only thing I'd add is to the national, it is National Peace Officer Day, and then the chief and several officers are in Washington with Grant, which is Felicia's husband, and she, her name was placed on the wall.
That's it. All right, thank you. Ron White, Building Official.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Just a couple of things. To date, I'll give you some figures real quick. As of today, the Building Department has issued 101 permits with a valuation of about 17 and 3/4 million dollars. About 11 million of that is single-family residential, so we've seen a big uptick this year in single-family residential construction. And most of the residences, well, I can say pretty much all of the new residences are 400,000 to pushing 2 million, so seeing some pretty nice homes coming into the into the area. I want to recognize and congratulate Inspector Josh Johns and his family on the arrival of his new son, Cooper Ray Johns. Little fella came into the world at eight pounds, 13 ounces, 21 and 3/4 inches, probably would have won most any tournament around here. Definitely the big bass bash. And I also want to welcome Mike Macides, our janitorial custodian. He started April 28th. He comes to us with 30 years' experience with the Omaha Public Schools, so he's going to be taking care of the same level of staff as he did for 30 years here. But he's hit the ground running, done a lot of organizing already, just making a fantastic show in the early running. An update on a couple of projects. This week, we've completed the fire alarm panel upgrade for City Hall, as well as the HVAC heat pump loop flush and chemical treatment, following that, the failure of our boilers this winter. And that's all I have to report.
All right, thank you very much. Drew, you have anything?
Yes, I'm happy to say that we have a construction inspector hopefully coming in the beginning of June, and so be looking forward to that and getting him on board and getting him acquainted with the city and the projects in the city. Summit Circle Drainage Project was just completed, had final walkthrough last Friday. Osage Beach Road, we should be out of the dirt soon, and you'll see sidewalk and paving hopefully in the next couple of months. And Veterans Memorial is moving forward after the change order was completed. Contractor was notified to order materials, so should be seeing progress on that after materials are delivered. And I'm in the process of developing a pavement maintenance project for, she's not here tonight, but Dew Branch Road in Lazy Days for a melon fill overlay project to kind of take care of some of the the road issues on both of those roads. They were identified in our pavement assessment plan, and going to try and take care of them this year.
Very good. Thank you much. Eric Gregory Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Probably many of you have noticed that the City Park Road leading down to the Dog Park and Soccer Fields has been closed down Monday and Tuesday, and thanks to the, in cooperation with the Camden County Road Department, the Camden County Special Roads District, and the City Transportation Department. Happy to say the road is now paved, including the Dog Park parking lot and the Maintenance Shop parking lot. Very much appreciated, a very nice addition to a city park, making a lot of people happy, especially the Dog Park people and the the park maintenance people. It's nice to not have to drive down a gravel road anymore. So thank you very much to all those. Little League season is in full swing, no pun intended. We also have Church League starting up next week, and slow pitch softball two nights a week, so three to four nights a week. It's very, very busy in the parks world, keeping the grass mowed, setting fields, and but we're doing quite well. We have a great crew. Sand volleyball courts are being heavily used and made a lot of people happy. Very large local group are using them, and we're going to continue to make improvements. And hopefully installing signage to the disc golf course tomorrow, and hope to have it open early next week if all goes well. And just a reminder, our first Parks movie night is scheduled for tomorrow evening at City Park on Soccer Field One. The movie will start at 8:30 PM, so bring the family out. This is a family-friendly event. It's free, and we'll be showing Homeward Bound, so we hope to see everybody there. That's all I have.
Thank you. Great movie.
Yeah.
City Planner, Kara Patterson.
Yes, Mayor, members of the board. So we have a Board of Zoning Adjustment meeting next Fri, Wednesday at 4 o'clock. Just to give you an idea, this will be our fourth BZA meeting out of five months this year, which is very uncommon. Kevin and some others will remember, we went from 2011 to 2014 and didn't have a meeting, let alone four in one year. But that kind of piggybacks on what Ron was saying about single-family construction and residential construction with our, within our community. So it's not just brand-new homes. We have a lot of folks that have moved in, have found a liking in our community, and now they're wanting to improve their homes. And part of what comes with that is people who want to add a room or some accessibility or something like that to legal non-conforming structures within our community. And that's what the majority of what the Board of Zoning Adjustment sees. So typically, it means, if we're seeing a lot of BZA requests, it means that we have people putting a lot of money in our community. And especially, the good thing is, is that every little, you know, dollar that goes into residential within our community helps our needs for housing. So we're seeing quite a bit of that right now. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right. Alderman Rucker.
Yes, a couple of items. Welcome, Jeff. Looking forward to working with you. And as Lieutenant O'Day said, it's been a, I know, a tough couple of weeks here for the police department with the memorial services. It always seems to piggyback on my brain, because that's, I recall back in the days when we had those kinds of things for the fire service and and the policing services just like that, fire service, it's a family group, and and when you lose someone, it's very, very difficult to handle. And so our hearts still go out to them, to all those police officers that have lost their life. Devin, on the financial update, could you bring forth, I'm familiar with it because I look at the monthly information, but I believe you're enlightening the public as well on our our financial situation. Could you give just a short little blurb on the expenditure side? You know, like, we're, we're, because financial update is not just income. I mean, I know that we are underneath what we projected to spend, you know, each month because that's good business to do that. But if you could just kind of think that through at your at your next time and give something to, just let them know, we're, we're not, we're not spending more than what we've got coming in. I think that would be important for them to understand that with the financial update. And your report that just really not getting around to getting into it, because I've been busy with a lot of other things that you did, was very helpful, very educational. I very much enjoyed it, and very enlightening. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Alderman Brille.
Well, I've been out for a little bit, and I'm glad to be back. First, I just wanted to miss a few meetings, and I wanted to just publicly thank Alderman Ross for his years of service to the city and setting as an alderman. He's a dear friend of mine and somebody that I respect, and the one that wrote me in, knowing that I have a heart for serving my community, but just wanted to say thanks to him and welcome. Rebecca Collins, looking forward to working with you and meeting you. And then Jeff, welcome. I think he kind of sold me on the data-driven part. Had a conversation with them and just something that I feel that's always lacking, like, we, when we go to make those decisions, if more vacancies need filled or more spots or things like that, that's always just something that's beneficial to have, so. And other than that, everybody have a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, it's here.
Yeah.
Alderman Hoffman, you still got the voice down there?
Oh, yeah. I could go all night if you want me to, Mr. Mayor. I don't think anyone wants that. Jeff, welcome in. It is honestly a great to have another Navy guy. I was very impressed with your resume. I did actually call a few people who you might know, best places you've worked. I heard very good things about you. That was good to hear, and so welcome aboard, shipmate. Jamie and Devin, and April 2, I guess, thank you for filling the public information officer role swiftly, something that we, I don't feel was great when I first started here, but I feel like we're getting people on board quickly now, and I do really appreciate that. Jamie, I hope you train people as well as you do your job when you when you got here. I had one more thing. What was it? Oh, good luck to everyone that's out there in the big, croppy tournament this weekend. You all have a chance, because Ron and I are not fishing in it. And that's it. Thanks a lot.
Alderman Osteen.
Just a few things this evening. I, too, wanted to welcome Mr. Fisher to the city of Osage Beach. A little behind the scenes, Alderman Hoffman and I are friends with the city administrator from one of your prior employers, so we did a little, our own background check on you. It all came back really good, so. Mr. Hoffman, can you give us an update on the, is there an anticipated completion date for the Veterans Memorial?
The change order was, I got final word from the Elks Lodge, who agreed to reimburse the city for the amount of flagpoles. Because of the cost of that, it's going to have to run up their whole sort of organizational food chain. But, but the contractor was informed that they can go ahead and order materials. I have not heard back on an actual delivery date yet. And then that will also be contingent upon when they they can schedule this work back, because the the project was significantly delayed because of this material deficiency. And they have other work, and so they'll have to retool their schedule to make sure they can get this work done. So at, today, I don't have an anticipated date. As soon as I get one, I can, I can relay that to you all.
I would appreciate that. I had, will ask me when it's going to be completed, and I hate not having some type of framework for them.
Yeah, it's a, it's a 90-day contract, so as soon as they start working, there's 90 days in the contract before liquidated damages are charged.
Okay. Next question is for Eric on Parks and Rec. Are we fully staffed for the summer? Are we fully staffed?
We are fully staffed.
Congratulations. You're about to enter your busy season, so.
We are there, sir.
You are there. Lastly, because of how the calendar falls, we will not meet for three weeks. We will be well into summer the next time we meet, so just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend. That's it. Thank you. Alderman Collins.
I don't have anything tonight, just, yeah, have a very happy and safe Memorial Day.
Thank you. I only have a couple of things. Yeah, Jeff, congratulations, welcome aboard, look forward to working with you. I've had the opportunity to talk to him several times other than interviewing, and he's looking for a place to live, Bob. They like the outdoors, so if you have fixer-upper, a few acres outside of Osage Beach area, anybody listening out there?
Devin, you need a neighbor, or how's it work out there?
So, so anyway, let him know, let him know. But congratulations, look forward to working with you. And a personal note, I want to thank the Public Works Department as a whole, because they were part of this process. Just like any negotiation process, there's some give and take, some disagreements at times, some positives, some negatives. We look at all avenues. Nobody knows what the future holds, but they give them the assurance that they're going to give you their their best and work with you, Jeff. And so I look forward to good things over there, and I'm going to, I'm going to stay part of that project, because I do want people to know that the city of Osage Beach sewer system, along with Lake Ozark, is solid. We've got some problems that we're correcting, and this is hopefully a big step towards correcting that, so congratulations. Also, thanks to Anglers Outpost folks, I, too, have been talking to them. When I said Dan and I talked several times, we literally talked several times, whether Sundays or weekends, or, and it is a negotiation process, but all the taxing districts, again, we take them to heart, and the city does not spend any money on third-party financial advisors. They use investors, or developers' money to do that, so the city's not out anything. And with Jeff White, Mark Spikeman, and Cole, we have some of the best people in the business protecting the city and our taxing district. So it was a win-win for everybody, and I look forward to that project moving forward. And the only other thing is, yes, I was going to say the same thing, Bob, we've got three weeks and Memorial Day, watch yourself out there, stay folk, stay safe, folks, there's going to be a lot of boats on the water. And but, you know what, have a great time, spend some money in Osage Beach, so.[1787.91]